Are we recording? Perfect, okay. And then you'll... Sorry. And Connor, just to confirm before we get started, you'll be watching if anybody joins the online meeting later.
Yes, I will, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Okay, good evening, everybody. Please be aware, if you are attending this meeting, our meetings are recorded for future viewing. And we are privileged to gather on the traditional territory of the Kwakwakiuak. So I'll call the meeting to order. Just want to mention at the start that this bylaw is a draft for consideration, which is why we are having this process this evening. This public hearing is being held in accordance with Division Three of the Local Government Act, requiring public input on planning and land use bylaws. Kevin Brooks, our consultant planner from McElhenney Limited, will give an introductory presentation on the proposed zoning bylaw 705 2021. Staff will then read out written submissions. The public will be given an opportunity to speak and are required to give their full name and residential address prior to being allowed to speak. And we ask that you speak once, give everybody an opportunity to be able to have a chance to voice their concerns and then come up if you have a second item to add. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes in length. Please keep in mind that the information submitted during this public consultation will form a part of public record. Tonight, we're going to alternate, when it comes to that section, alternate between the floor and teams. And I'd ask those online if you can use the raised hand function when you are ready to speak. Please have patience, as this is our first hybrid public hearing meeting. And I'll be working closely with our CFO, Brenda Johnson, to make sure that no one is missed online as well as in the room. And when you do speak, you'll be coming up here to the mic, and we have some chairs there if you line up and would like to sit down and wait your turn. As a reminder, the town will not receive any more public input regarding the proposed bylaw once the public hearing process is closed. We are here tonight to listen, and council will only ask questions if they are looking for clarification after you've spoken. So I'll turn this part of the meeting over to Kevin Brooks to report on the proposed bylaw at this time.
How's that? Thank you, Your Worship. So I have a brief presentation to go over the proposed zoning bylaw. The brief presentation covers basically the high points of what we've done over the past couple of years to bring the bylaw to the state that it is now. One thing I do want to reiterate that Your Worship has mentioned, this is a proposal for consideration by both council and by the public. Tonight, we're here to listen to comments. And this proposal, no decisions will be made tonight. And what we hear tonight will be brought back to council for consideration for potential revisions as required to ensure that the zoning bylaw meets the needs and desires of the community. A slide, please. So the zoning bylaw review that we did isn't a full review of the actual bylaw. What we did is, we did a multiple-stage zoning review, where we looked at housekeeping measures with a real focus on trying to make the bylaw more easy to understand and more easy to administer by staff and easier to understand by both the public and by any developers that may work here. We also integrated elements to make the bylaw more consistent with the official community plan that was adopted back in early April, March. A slide, please. With that, some of the key elements that we did look at as part of the review was, again, that ease of administration of the bylaw itself, removal of unlawful clauses. The actual bylaw itself is quite, the existing bylaw is quite old, has a lot of elements from the 1960s in it. And those are unlawful legal clauses that we're trying to remove and just clean the bylaw up. Reconcile uses. What we mean by reconciliation of uses is actually going through all of the uses and making sure that they're easy to understand. And I'll go into this in a little bit more detail. And a review of the definitions, again. The key component of a zoning bylaw really is the definition section. That's how we interpret how and what can occur within the community. And I'll go through that in a little bit more detail. Slide, please. A key element of what we actually did was actually reforming, reformatting of the bylaw, cleaning it up so it's just easier to go through and use. This includes going through all the zones and actually reformatting them to understand, and putting them into tables, and also going through a lot of the numbering, and that was, which was inconsistent through the bylaw. Slide, please. This is actually really hard to see, especially from in the gallery. But in the top left-hand corner is the new R1 zone. It's one page. The other five pages are the existing R1 zone. What you'll find is the areas that are circled there are what are required in the R1 zone. All the other elements were either unlawful elements, or what we did is we took them and consolidated them into the general provisions section on the bylaw. Again, with that idea of making it easier to administer and easier to understand. Slide, please.
Wondering if it's a battery issue? No? Okay.
So speaking to the idea of the definitions and reconciling the uses, what we did is we went through the entire bylaw, enlisted every use in the bylaw, and then made sure that there's definitions associated with each of those. So if you're actually trying to do something, you have to understand how the town looks at what that use means. What we found is that there is 82 uses and only 42 definitions, which means that all the uses in the bylaw weren't defined, meaning that it creates conflict when you're trying to do something to understand how the town looks at it and how someone is proposing to do something. What we also found is in a lot of the definitions or in a lot of elements of the bylaw, there's regulatory requirements in that, which makes it very, very complicated to administer. So what we did is we pulled the regulations out of the definitions. We simplified those definitions. And then we added an additional 40 or 45 definitions, again, just to help with ease of understanding and ease of interpretation for the bylaw for both town staff and the general public. Next slide, please. Also, what we did is we took a lot of elements that were embedded in zones throughout, and we actually added them to the general provisions section of the bylaw. The general provisions is those elements in a zoning bylaw that pertains to everywhere in the community. And you can see here the list of various things that we touched on. The one thing that we have heard about throughout this process is urban chickens. And we have heard people that are in support of chickens and people are not in support of chickens. And we do expect that we'll hear from some people tonight in regards to that topic. Next slide, please. So the big moves, and this is something I've been talking to a lot of people about over the last few weeks. I'm sure many of you may have given me a call. These are those zoning changes that we've made. Next slide, please. So these are the proposed map revisions. These are those zone changes that we have proposed in the community. This here shows changes. On your left-hand side is the existing zoning map. On the right-hand side is the proposed rezoning. So you can see on the left-hand side, the green area that says A2, and there's a dark green area. Those are agriculturally zoned parcels. It's actually the agricultural zones in the zoning bylaw are really a rural zone. And we're proposing to rezone those portions. The light green to M1, which is light industrial, and the pink-colored one, or the fuchsia-colored one, which is a CS2, which would be consistent with where the gas station currently is, out on Mine Road and Campbell Way. Next slide, please. The next provision that we did is we're proposing to extend the light industrial uses along Mine Road to the north to extend further. Part of the discussion through overall conversation with community and staff and council was that there is a fundamental need for more light industrial lands within the community, and this represents that discussion. Slide, please. The most controversial of all the proposed moves that we had proposed as part of this and part of the discussion we had was really in the downtown. I've had lots of discussions with probably 10 or 12 different property owners over the last couple of weeks. And the fundamental question is, why was this proposal made? And where did this proposal come from? This proposal stems back to when Roger Brooks did his downtown tourism study and when the economic development report was done back in 2014 in regards to how to begin looking at beautifying and revitalizing the downtown area. And there were recommendations within those reports to begin looking at ways, beginning to transition the downtown and transition the light industrial uses in the downtown to other areas within the community. We have to remember, this is a proposal. And what we're here tonight is to hear from the community on these proposals and to hear your comments and concerns. With that, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have of me.
Thank you very much, Kevin. I'll move to item 3A and ask for our deputy CAO, Connor Mark, to please give a presentation of submissions on the proposed Town of Port MacNeil zoning bylaw that were written.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll begin with a written submission from the Chamber of Commerce. Dear Town of Port MacNeil, Mayor and Council, the Port MacNeil Chamber of Commerce foremost would like to acknowledge that we, as an organization, are both pro-business and pro-community. We applaud and support comprehensive community planning and development. We share the vision of the evolution of the Town of Port MacNeil into a more livable and sustainable community, as do all the PMCC members who have engaged with us on the topic of rezoning the downtown. We write today regarding the proposed zoning bylaw, rezoning of the downtown core, slated for public consultation on June 13, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Our members and many business have reached out in the past couple of days with concerns. There are some key points that the current landowners would like to see considered in this process. And from a business perspective, and with a lens of both economic opportunity and sustainable community development, the Chamber supports these longstanding businesses and their thoughts on this matter. We have listed out the most salient considerations below. Key considerations. Under the current plan for rezoning, there is no evidence of economic viability of the changes being called for. The business owners do not have a roster of C2 appropriate businesses who have expressed interest in investment. There are current M1 businesses willing to continue to do M1 appropriate business in the locations listed for potential rezoning. There are currently underutilized and empty commercial spaces in C2 zoning. Increasing C2 zoning while there are existing vacancies may result in further vacancies and/or unused space in the downtown region. Construction costs are at an all-time high, and economists are forecasting a potential recession in our future, in part to slow rampant inflation. Transitioning these properties from M1 to C2 zoning in the short term is challenging for businesses to afford at best. Existing C2 businesses are struggling and calling for community support to improve their infrastructure and provide the warrant for existing tenant improvements and reinvestment. There are insufficient M1 sites in the community to transition existing M1 businesses to. The businesses and people owning M1 sites have expressed a willingness to open their doors to opportunities afforded by C2 zoning, but would like to do this in a supportive business climate. Options such as dual zoning have been suggested to allow for the community, to allow the opportunity of development without possible, with possible multi-year negative impacts and create smoother transitions in planning. The businesses that are zoned M1 are some of the longest-standing businesses in our community and support employment and the tax base. These business owners and employees are Port MacNeil and North Island residents who, like council, want to see a vibrant, livable community. We appreciate the goals suggested by the official community's plan and suggest in ongoing operations with OCP goals and strategies, we must be flexible and responsive to the economy and the needs of the community. On behalf of the Chamber and our member businesses, we request that the rezoning and large-scale policy changes be deferred pending further assessment and meaningful one-on-one engagement with impact and emergent investment in business parties. Some options to work towards and goals of rezoning include, but are not limited to, a fulsome economic impact assessment, which proves out the feasibility of this zoning modification for current property owners and businesses, compilation of specific data and warrants around in emergent development needs, document, documentation of the ability of new businesses to finance C2 construction and development in this economic climate, and that in the interim, the Town of Port MacNeil continue to work with private party owners, private property owners, on beautification and/or practices that incrementally guide our community towards greater livability without punitive damages from quick policy and zoning changes. We are all in this together. On behalf of the Board of the Port MacNeil Chamber of Commerce and our members, thank you for considering these perspectives, and we look forward to further engagement. Sincerely, Eric Dukovich, President, on behalf of the Board of the Port MacNeil Chamber of Commerce. Next, we have a written submission from Brad Zealand, North Island Pacific Parts and Sales Limited. In regards to the proposal, proposed zoning bylaw amendments, unfortunately, due to prior plans, I will not be able to attend the hearing on June 13. While I can appreciate the idea of making the downtown as attractive as possible, I am completely against the idea to change our property and others from industrial M1 to commercial C2. If beautifying the downtown area is, in fact, the main motive behind this change, I believe there's better ways to go about it. Depending on the existing infrastructure of some of the businesses currently zoned under M1, it can only be detrimental to the value of their property, business, and future possibilities to utilize the property if forced to change to C2. When I try and look at this from a different perspective, I still can't see how it makes sense. Some of the larger commercial buildings in town are half vacant and look rundown. Is more C2 really going to help the situation if these current M1 properties lose a tenant and can't find new ones because it, because there is too much C2 available? Industries and the economy of Port MacNeil are slowly changing and diversifying, and it is important that the town does as well. But it is also important to remember that many of these industrial businesses employ high-paying jobs that are stable year-round and have been paying property taxes for decades. It seems a little naive that some could think that we and others would be agreeable to changing our zoning. Again, I'm all for cleaning up the downtown. I'm open to have discussions with council on what that could look like, not feeling like my hands are being forced. Next, I have a submission from Ian Zimmerman. Town of Port MacNeil Council, I'm responding to the notice of rezoning for 383 403 Pioneer Hill Drive. I have recently received from the Port MacNeil Town Council, I am the owner of the property and purchased it as an investment for future use of my business. It currently serves as a mechanical machine shop, a business that is needed to support local industry. I am adamantly opposed to the proposed rezoning of the property from industrial to commercial use. This property has been zoned as industrial for over 40 years, a zoning that we have a shortage of in this town. Port MacNeil has ample commercial space that often sits vacant. Adding to this will simply exacerbate this problem. If this is about beautifying the downtown core, I think we can all agree that Port MacNeil has many existing commercial buildings that are in dire need of beautification. Simply rezoning a property does not mean it will transform the downtown area. Perhaps focus our attention to amending bylaws to encourage beautification, beautifying the exterior of all downtown businesses. Furthermore, who, furthermore, who exactly is going to want to rent these commercial spaces? And who is going to pay for the extensive interior renovations that would be required in order to convert these spaces to use for commercial purposes? Do you actually believe Port MacNeil will have lineup of tenants wanting to rent commercial real estate? In 10 years, I have owned these properties. I haven't had one. You provide some suggestions such as hotels, pubs, garden centers, cannabis retail, school, veterinary clinics, et cetera. Not a single one of your suggested, suggestions are needed in Port MacNeil. Nor would I want to encourage competition against those already existing businesses in a town of only 2,200 people. It really is preposterous that you would suggest these as viable options in such a small town. Port MacNeil Council needs to support our existing businesses, whether it be commercial or industrial, and not inflict unnecessary cost and unnecessary competition amongst existing businesses. I hope the Town Council will not adopt this amendment and rather support the longstanding businesses and community members who contribute to our tax base and provide a range of services that are needed by both local citizens and tourists who visit our town. Next, I have a submission from Bernie Zimmerman. The notice of rezoning opportunity for input on Port MacNeil zoning bylaw update provides notice that two properties at 383 Pioneer Drive, owned by my son Ian Zimmerman, are to be rezoned from M1 industrial to C2 commercial. These properties have been used as industrial and automotive repair facilities since I arrived in Port MacNeil in 1982. Apparently, other neighboring industrial properties are similarly scheduled for rezoning. I own two residential properties in Port MacNeil and have been managing forestry businesses on the North Island during the past 40 years. As part of the offers, only, as part of the opportunity for public input on the proposed bylaw amendments, I hereby submit my objection to this proposal. The notice explains the intention to formally amend the zoning bylaw to reflect the direction and vision as outlined in the town's official community plan. To save time, I will not read out the full list of proposed uses. The accessory use list do not justify rezoning either. Are there developers looking for property on which to build apartments, townhouses, or row houses? Lots of vacant land available along Campbell Way. We have storage facilities on Mine Road, M1 including storage. Port MacNeil was built by Forest Industry. Logging activities has declined substantially during the past 10 years and will continue to shrink in the future. Reduction in the annual allowable cut and increased mechanization has dramatically reduced employment. Environmental pressures to set aside more old growth and preserve more of the forest land base will severely impact timber harvesting on the North Island and near my mainland. Mainland logging camps, which rely on Port MacNeil for supplies, services, and float plane traffic are gone. Have you heard a beaver taking off from the Port MacNeil harbor lately? We used to have a fleet of float planes managed by Orca Air. Signs which state "forestry feeds my family" may be replaced by "forestry fed my family." It is absolutely important that our town projects what it will need and zoning gets adjusted to meet those anticipated needs. To that end, our vision must be clear. Wake up, encourage small business. Have you been to Port Alice lately? Not exactly a bustling community, is it? That's what happens to a community when the prime source of employment dries up. Does anyone think the permitted uses listed under C2 commercial zoning would have been helpful? Would a library or bus terminal have helped that community? Do not make our Town of Port MacNeil more difficult for small business in which to invest and operate by rezoning industrial properties into commercial C2 zoning. We need to encourage light industrial functions, metal shops and machine shops, contractors, workyards, automobile parts and repairs, et cetera, as currently permitted under M1. Why would we want to preclude these businesses? What is the real purpose of this zoning change? This irrational rezoning creates, this irrational rezoning creates skepticism, business uncertainty, community instability, and undermines the value of existing facilities. There is no reasonable justification to our community for doing this. Hopefully, there is no benefit to those individuals advocating such rezoning either. Next, we have a submission from Jim Cameron that were forwarded through Kevin Brooks of McElhenney Limited. Please forward my concerns as to why I'd be opposed to the rezoning. I have no idea how these changes could affect our operations. The following would be my concerns. Would this prevent us from making changes, such as new buildings, et cetera, on this property? We plan to continue upgrading to better our business. Would this reduce the value of our property now and also in the future in the event we wanted to sell? What would happen if we did sell? Or could we sell under the new zoning and allow new operations to continue as it is today? Under the C2 zoning, where would the recycle depot fall under? As the new person who has recently purchased this operation and has spent over $2 million in improvements, I'm absolutely opposed to these proposed bylaw changes. And next, I will move on to chicken-specific submissions. From John Plucard. I was asked to write down my complaints about the chickens in town bylaw. This letter might be long, but there are so many issues. The smell issue is so bad, I will give you several examples. When it is hot, the chicken crap cooks all day and smells awful. Later in the day, it cools off. The cooked chicken track turns to a nasty smog that you can taste. Nice. When it rains, the chicken crap gets all stirred up and smells terrible. After the rain fills up the pens, it starts to overflow, and the oil forms, and the oil from the chicken crap runs down the length of the property, and everything in its path is covered in chicken crap. Crap oil slippery and stinky all over my shoes, tires, and the truck, and everything in its path. When the weather is doing nothing, the chicken crap smells just hangs around my house and smells all day. When I open my house door and there is a slight breeze, that the house gets filled up with the smell. I could go on. When I get subcontractors to come to the house, it's a problem. Also, without any solicited response, the roofers asked if we had raw sewage open somewhere. This is so unfair and totally takes away from the enjoyment of my property, and the chicken is every day. It's going to get worse the deeper the chicken crap gets. The more it's going to leach into the land around them. I could go on, but I hope this is enough to stop the chicken bylaw. Oh, I guess one more thing. Imagine if all four neighbors around you did this. This submission is from an unknown person at 636 Betts Boulevard. I'm writing, as I am stressed, that my rights have been altered by a couple that have no respect for our community. My neighbors have bullied their way into having chickens in a zone not allowed, not allowing them. I have incurred complaints of smell by my workers for months. I do not want chickens in town residential properties. I don't think people should be able to break bylaws, and I do not think people know enough about farm animals these days, as it's absurd that someone could text me and say, "Sorry, I will try and keep the smell to a minimum." This next, this next submission is from Trevor Bingham. During the weeks of construction, October 19 to 23, 2021, I've been subjected to the pollutants of, from the chickens from the next-door residents. First was the extreme smell. I have been trying to be polite and understanding. Three days in a row, I've been contaminated by this chicken water. Finally, I dropped a tool, stepping back to pick it up, and at that same time, splashed the contaminated water in my face, over my body. I was very stressed and concerned about the repercussions to my health. Personally, I do not think I should be dealing with this on any job site or town location. Next, we have a submission from David Hedrick, 2109 Chellan Crescent, to the Town of Port MacNeil staff. Thank you for taking time to consider my correspondence. I'll try to keep it succinct. I have concerns over the proposal to allow poultry- I have concerns over the proposal to allow poultry to be farmed in areas where it is now prohibited. Until recently, I would have supported it for many reasons, including liberty, independence, and resilience of our individuals and communities. That has now changed due to work near such a farm for a few months. I have nothing bad to say of the individuals caring for it. They work diligently every day to care for their animals and properties. They are good examples for everyone to follow, and I commend their efforts and hard work to cultivate stock in a clean and healthy environment. Even with skilled caretakers, the animals have created a nuisance in many ways. For example, this summer, when attending meetings at a neighbor's residence, the smell from the coop was clear and unpleasant inside the house, even though it was hundreds of feet away. It has hindered the enjoyment of enjoyment or use of our neighbor's property, which is really unfair because it is quite onerous for the neighbors to try to find civil remedies for this loss of their use when it is really the town's responsibility to enforce bylaws, which are now shunted to the property owners due to the town's non-feasance. Personally, I have had to deal with this too. At some economic loss and risk, and it poses continued threat to my health and economic prosperity. I'm building a house adjacent to the farm and have to dig a ditch or ditches and install drainage systems to try and divert the sewage from the farm as it draining directly onto the work site. The smell is often putrid and overwhelm and overpowering. Even when on the far side of the property inside the houses we're building. There is an oil slick on the surface water of fats and oils from chicken fecal waste and food waste, which often splashes up covering my legs and knees in frequent rain we have here. This I can deal with, though reluctantly, and I really shouldn't have to. My fear is that I cannot deal with loss of revenue from my employment if we're unable to sell this home due to the farm right next to the main entrance, which might turn off many potential buyers or reduce the sale price due to the nuisance. In this case, we are investing hundreds of thousands of dollars to build a new, a new homes in this town, which are clearly needed by the community and it is put at risk to supply a few dozen eggs each week for the farmer. That is not to say farming does not have a place here. It clearly does, just across the road in area zoned A one, right next door to the offender, for example. If they had wished to have a farm, they should have chosen to put it in place zone for farming. We wanted to build residential housing, so we selected an area zoned for residential housing. We should not have to risk our investment and livelihood for the sake of people that do not want to follow simple rules that were clearly expressed in the town bylaws. If I had built a house next to a farm, I would expect the consequences. But they should not be my responsibility in case, nor should enforcement of the bylaws be my responsibility. I'm strongly opposed to changes to the bylaw that would allow farming in residential areas. If it is to be the case that people that ignore the bylaws are rewarded at the expense of those following it, then we will soon have anarchy. I personally, a person could simply stop applying for permits, stop allowing inspections and stop following building codes and bylaws. Do whatever they want if that is the way of things here. Thank you again for your time, and if you have any questions regarding this matter, please feel free to call me. Finally, we have another unnamed submission from six thirty-six Betts Boulevard.
Before you read it out, can I ask you if there's any language in there that needs to be cleaned up if you can substitute a word, please?
Yes, of course, your worship. Dear town of Port McNeil or to whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter in regards to the chicken bylaw change. I fully disagree with the idea of having chickens on residential property, and here's why. I have been working beside them for a little over four months and there hasn't been a day where they haven't stunk. I can smell the chicken crap literally from the entire house. It is unavoidable. I have tried to ignore it, but there comes time where I have to write a complaint. I walk past the coop every day and my shoes stink. The whole house as I walk through. The rafters where I was painting baffles for airflow was horrible for this smell. While I was doing it, I had to stop multiple times because my eyes were watering from the smell. But what I think is even worse is the fact that our heating system is right beside the pen, which will cause that stench to be drawn throughout the entire house. And I'm concerned if the bylaw passes and someone else puts chickens beside others already standing, besides the other already standing heating system, it will cause discomfort for every house owner or renter.
Thank you very much. I just would like to ask, was that it for the written submissions?
Yes, that's it for the written submissions. Before we open it up to the floor, I had a few people registered to speak.
Okay, just one moment, though. I just want to refer to Kevin. I understand I had a phone call from Cliff West that he had contacted you about the A one going to M one. And I didn't hear that read out, and I'm not sure if he's here this evening, but he wanted to make sure that that comment was noted as well.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I did discuss it with Cliff West. And I'd mentioned earlier that one of the odd dozen people I spoke with that were not in favor of the rezonings.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, go ahead, please.
So I first have Scott Brown registered to speak if you are here and would like to approach the podium. Jessica Brown would be just as good if you're speaking on his behalf.
Oh, yay, getting me first. Hi, my name is Jessica Brown, two-two-five-one Mine Road. My husband Scott and I own one of the properties on Mine Road that the town is proposing to rezone. We are strongly opposed to the rezoning of our property, and I would like to tell you why. Our property is currently C two commercial, which allows us to have retail, indoor recreation, offices, personal and professional services, as well as second-story dwellings residential. Our buildings are built solely to suit these usages. The proposal by the town is to change it to M one industrial, which does not allow us any of those things. My husband and I, as well as my family before me, for generations have worked hard in this town to build, change, and structure our buildings and more properties to help improve, change, and have options to contribute to the town with more commercial space spacing as well as housing. Right now, our property has housing options during a huge housing crisis. If rezoned, our property alone would lose three single dwelling apartments, not to mention three commercial space options for future businesses. We have spent all our available time and money investing back into this property that focuses on its current zoning to fix up the property and the building. By zoning our property to industrial, you are deeming our buildings worthless. When it, when will it affect us drastically? I don't know. When we go to sell it, when our son buys it, when rentals are vacant for a period of time? In nineteen ninety-six, my grandfather on behalf of the family company proposed the change of that property to be zoned C two with this family vision in mind to build a commercial and residential building. It was approved and to my knowledge, non-opposed. My family decided to invest our lives' work to this. Our home, our future, our son's future, and it could potentially be wiped out by this change. Our buildings are C two, not M one. C two buildings on M one property are going to be worthless. Please tell me, my husband, my son, and our family, how this decision would make sense by removing options for housing and commercial spaces and to make a change that would negatively impact a property a family in this town has worked hard on for decades to set up for themselves and their future family.
Thank you very much. Connor, you said you had someone else that was scheduled or sorry, on the list?
Yes, your worship. Next, I have Paul Robertson from the Baptist Church. If you're here, if you'd like to approach the podium.
Or I see somebody on their behalf.
All couldn't make it, so I'm Ken Landy, representing the Baptist Church. We're at twenty-five oh one Mine Road, and it looks like
And your name, please, sorry?
Oh, Ken Landys.
Thank you.
It looks like we're being zoned M one is industrial, and I don't even see anything for a church on that. So we were wondering would be be able to carry on our church on that property? And also, if if we are able to expand our church if we need to, or do any renovations or anything if we're zoned industrial? If anything happened and we had to rebuild, would that, would that also be able to happen as a church?
So I'll refer that to our planner to answer, please.
Thank you, your worship. Through your worship. Yes, you'd be able to continue the church and you would be able to expand. One of the recommended changes that came from council is to allow for places of worship on any parcel of land within the community, and therefore we'd be able to continue and expand as as needed or desired by the church.
And rebuild because
Yes, and rebuild.
Okay. So that's the questions we had, and we just had some concerns because it wasn't on the industrial site. So I believe that's all we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Kevin, was there any comment? Thank you very much. Was there any comment previously from the proponent that you might be able to explain about the rezoning and how that affects?
Certainly, your worship. With regards to, I believe I spoke with Mr. Brown a couple of weeks ago in regards to this. How rezoning works, if we rezone the parcels from the C two to M one, the existing uses are are permitted to continue on in perpetuity. It is known as legal nonconforming under the Local Government Act, and the provincial legislation protects the existing uses that were occurring at time that the rezoning were to occur. So as long as the property owners continue to use it as such, they can continue that way, like I said, in perpetuity. Those uses are protected and grandfathered.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question? Clarify whether housing is allowed in the current zone, I believe the second floor and then one? Would there be any change in the housing situation?
Through your worship. I wouldn't be able to do that right now because what I'd have to do is go back to the bylaw that was in place in ninety-six when the rezoning was actually approved to confirm that and then go through that in detail to understand that in in detail to be able to answer your question adequately. Fundamentally, because the use was in existence since ninety-six, fundamentally based on our knowledge, it it become a legal nonconforming use also, based on my best understanding right now.
Just to clarify, if it's second floor residential, C two is allowed? M one, second floor, allowed residential? And C two is allowed?
Through your worship, I apologize, Counselor Cole, I'm not understanding your question.
Yeah, and just for council and actually for the public, tomorrow evening, we will be inviting Kevin to answer all of our questions. Those will be recorded, and I I would imagine that there'll be a lot of questions coming out of this public hearing process that we will be putting forward to him as well. Okay, was there anyone else that was registered to speak? Please, Connor?
Yes, your worship. We next have John Ishwood or Victoria Barrett to talk about chickens.
I'm John Russell Ishwood from three seven six Inglewood. I am pro chickens. I think with the economy and way things are going, I think backyard gardens are on the up. I've never experienced fecal rivers. I have had chickens in the past, certainly never experienced fecal fog. There is a certain amount of odor that goes with birds, but I believe four birds in a properly kept coop would have very little impact. I think it's also great for kids to see animals raised and be able to take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just got a message. There was a gentleman at the door. There is a baseball game on the lower field tonight. And there are some people that are parked in a spot where they may want to move their cars. So just thought I would pass that along. If you like, we can take a brief adjournment here so that people don't miss the meeting and you could do that. Is there anyone else that was registered to speak?
No, your worship. That was the registered speakers. I would now invite you to open up the floor to the public.
Okay, so, yes. Can you speak in here so that those online can hear your mic? Yeah. Thank you.
Further to the conversation from the planner regarding grandfathering, I'd like some clarification on what the property owner can do once we rezone it from M1, from C2 to M1, and will the property owner be able to continue developing that property as if it were C2? Or does all the C2 improvements become frozen, and they can't add to them or not? I think that wasn't very clear for me.
Okay, and also, what happens if they were to sell the property? Because I think that goes hand in hand, right?
Good, yeah.
Yeah, okay. To Kevin, please.
Thank you, worship, and thank you very much for the question, Counsel Mitchell. So I'll provide clarity, and this actually pertains to all properties that are being rezoned, that have an existing use on it. What happens is the use that you're doing now is considered grandfathered. So you can continue that use on, whether it's, you know, the M1 use being rezoned to C2, or the C2 use being rezoned to M1. You're allowed to continue that use on in perpetuity, but what the legislation says is you cannot change or expand that use, but you can maintain that use. So what does that mean, right? So what that means is, in the context of the C2 commercial use up on Mine Road, you have retail stores, things of that nature, and residential above. You can continue to operate exactly as is. You cannot expand or fundamentally change that use from it is, but you continue to use it. If you were to change it at that point, it would then have to be consistent with the new zone, the M1 zone. And vice versa, with the M1 zone properties in the downtown, the industrial uses that are on them now could continue on in perpetuity. You could maintain them, you can operate them, but you wouldn't be able to expand them if the C2 zone is put in place. If you were to then use any other new uses or add uses onto that, the new uses would have to be consistent with the C2 zone. So thank you very much for allowing me to clarify, Counsel Mitchell.
Okay, thank you. Did you have another question?
That's in case of fire as well. That's where the 70% comes in. If 70% of the building's destroyed, they cannot rebuild it under the old zoning.
Through your worship, to Counsel Barron, it's 75%. And that 75% of assessed value is determined by a building official, so yes. So if a building were to burn down in a legal nonconforming situation and be damaged greater than 75% of the value of the building, then they could not rebuild based on the way that the Local Government Act is written, correct?
Okay, excellent question. A follow-up, sorry, just a follow-up to that. So I don't know if anybody else caught it, but it threw me off. Because we've zoned, every zone can have a church in it. That's why when Mr. Landy asked if they could rebuild, expand, et cetera, even though they're zoned as industrial, or whatever, they can do that because a church is allowed anywhere. So they would not be legally nonconforming. They would actually be conforming because we allow a church in an industrial spot.
Through your worship, that is correct, Counsel Barron.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to make the first call for any submissions from the floor or teams. And a reminder again, when you come to the mic or raise your hand on teams, to please state your name and your address. And if you can come up here, and we can form a line for those who are inside the building. Just one question. It says there's five minutes left in the meeting time. That doesn't mean anything, does it? It'll continue?
It will continue recording.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Please come to the mic.
Hi. I'm Belinda Sinclair. I live at 2475 Cheloson Crescent, and I'm definitely not a public speaker. From the research that I've done, if the town continues to move ahead with the proposed zoning bylaw changes, they will be adding to the existing issues that have been identified in the official community plan by law 704. Section 97 industrial states, and I quote, "This form of development often needs specific road and infrastructure." It also states there are current water pressure issues in this area, and as such, new development will need to provide updates to enable future development. Mine Road is already unable to handle the current usage. The road surface is crumbling, and the culverts are collapsing. The water tower is the last to receive water from the wells. The properties along the way receive water first, then the water tower gets filled. Adding industrial properties to a system that has already been identified as a problem could potentially leave residences and businesses without water, especially if any of the new industrial properties are heavy consumers or put pumps in place to increase their water pressure while reducing everyone else's pressure. The housing crisis that the North Island is currently in has also been identified in the community plan and should be the priority. By addressing this issue, the entire community would benefit. The town owns property on Pioneer Hill that could be subdivided and sold at affordable rates. This would increase the tax base, which would help pay for the upgrades to the infrastructures that have already been identified. Some of the changes proposed will be reducing the amounts of rentals or properties that are currently zoned as residential. This doesn't make sense. I have an observation as well. The park located on Camoson Crescent Loop was zoned as residential in bylaw 671, and with bylaw proposal 705, it's now identified as rural. This park has signage identifying it as a park, and it's maintained as a park, so the zoning should be public use. As well, does the town have the correct insurance on this property since the zoning has been incorrect all these years? Did anyone consider the potential water issues? And was a financial plan drafted to outline the huge costs that the proposed zoning changes will require as the official community plan has set out? Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda, are there any questions online at this time? None? We're still on the first call. Is there anybody else who'd like to come and speak? Please come to the mic.
Good evening. I'm John Gluard, 636 Betts. First of all, I'd like to say, I know the town is always in a bad position when this stuff happens. I don't like to complain, especially when you're talking about people's properties being rezoned. I'm talking about the chickens. I was not against the chickens when they first came in, but after a week or two, they stunk so bad. And for someone to say they've never seen a river, a poo, and they haven't seen the smog, if any of the councils had come to my house, which I offered to, come and see it, you would have been just mortified. I do not want to have any bad feelings with my neighbors. I was friends with Perry for 30 years. We almost got in five fistfights. It stunk so bad, it's crazy. And we're talking of all these heat pumps. You're not having baseboards anymore. Heat pumps are sucking the air into your house. You've got that chicken crop coming, sorry, the crops you said, where chicken poop coming in and completely going through everything in your attic? Your insulation's going to be completely ruined. You're going to talk about people, say, someone comes in here, buys a house of $800,000, and he sucks all that chicken manure smell into his house, through his attic, and he's got money. He's going to sue you. You might not have to worry about, because you're protected by the town, but that guy has enough money. He might sue the town and just make everyone's life crazy because of chickens in town. And if you got one neighbor, then three, and you got four neighbors sucking all that stuff in from all these heat pumps, because everybody has to go to now as a heat pump, and you're sucking that air in, it's not going to work. I lived on a farm. My dad has a farm. I've got a farm in Saskatchewan. I'm all about farms. I'm all about the eggs and the meat, but it's got to be where it's zoned. Like, I would never have built a house there if I'd known it was going to be that bad. I just would have left it as a raw piece of property. But when I built it, I didn't care about the chickens. I didn't really, and then all of a sudden it came, and it was just insane. I wouldn't be here wasting your time with so many other people, way more things that they got to worry about, and have me up here talking about some chickens. So I would really, why can't you consider the smell and the heat pump and sucking it through the insulation? It will never, ever go away. The smell will be there forever, and you're just going to force people to move or not even buy it. We're supposed to be working as a community. That's affecting some people really personally. And there's lots of examples. And Poor Harriet got passed, and we've talked to a few people, and they say, when their neighbors out there having a barbecue on their deck in the summertime, it just stinks. And you're in town. We've got to make it out where you're already zoned for it. So sorry for taking up your time, and the people with the real issues in their zoning, I'll let you go on.
Thank you very much. No, that's okay. Don't apologize. Thank you. That's what a public hearing is for. Come to the mic, please, yeah.
Hi, my name's Bob Isaac, and I live at Hyde Creek. And I am Jessica and Scott's father. And the property is up on the top of the hill at Mine Road, where I sold them to those, to my daughter-in-law, and built them, and bought the one. The point I want to make, I know it was put in a couple of letters already. I know we say this is a proposal. Good gentleman, the end, three, four times now was said, when this zoning happens, when this zoning goes through. For 40 years, I've worked and invested in this community. This is the first time in 40 years. I am nervous and would not recommend anybody to put a penny, even though this is just a proposal. The doubt that this puts into people who have money invested in commercial property, I'd like you to consider and think, if a council came and said that they wanted to rezone your house, but don't worry, you can stay in your house for now. It's going to grandfather. This is not a big deal. I would like everybody on this council to make 100% sure they know exactly what they're talking about and exactly what the future is going to hold for these property owners before they make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Nicole Bullock. I live at 1833 Jensen Place. I'm here to discuss, I guess, say my piece about the chickens. I am the bad chicken lady. So I am not really opposed, and I'm not really for it, because I was in the middle, and I know both sides. There is a possibility to have chickens in town with rules, regulations, bylaws, bylaw enforcement officers. I had 12, so that was a huge amount of chicken poop that was produced on a daily basis. And I tried my damnedest to keep it under control. I think it's fair to say that it did smell. I'm going to argue to the point of how long and when it started. Bottom line is that we were asked to get rid of them by a certain time, and we did. So in respect with property damage, and that, I can't really speak to that because I've actually never been in that house or to smell anything in there. There is a definite way to get it done, as long as it's done right. And I think it is a good thing for the community to have little small gardens and the greenhouses and two or three chickens. I mean, a dozen chickens laying a dozen eggs a day. I was giving the cartons away, you know, you just, it was a lot. So yes, I was completely wrong to get them in the first place and go, you know, be ignorant about it. Lesson learned. But I do see that there is a possibility for self-sustainability within Fort McNeil. Everybody's looking for that. Inflation, gas prices, I mean, we are all busting our butts to get ahead. So if two or three chickens in a family that has four kids and loves birds and wants to have fresh eggs every day, then great. But as long as it's regulated and everything is on the up and up, you know, if it's permitted or what, but I think it's doable, as long as not everybody and their dog has a chicken coop. Maybe there's a cat, I don't know, but it's an option. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything online yet? Okay. So at this time, I'm going to give a second call for any submissions from the floor on our zoning bylaw 705 2022. Please go ahead.
My name's Aaron Gabrisch, and I own a property at 423 Pioneer Hill, which is currently zoned industrial, going to C2. We bought it about three years ago off Lauren and Pauline, and they had the old cabinet shop in there, which many people probably think it's a big void that we have in this town. My wife and I chose to leave it empty, hoping that someone would come in looking to build kitchen cabinets or something along those lines. Nothing's come up so far, but if we go to C2, that's going to lose that availability for someone to manufacture or do something out of that property. It's got 400 amp, three-phase power there, so it's got tons of juice for someone to build whatever our town needs when they come through to it. But going to C2 restricts that, and it would be a big void, I think, and a waste of a property in a downtown area. So just my concerns on that one.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Bob Coop, 2875 Woodland Drive, and also undeveloped M1 on Mine Road. When I bought that property, like, I love the current existing zoning. It's really, you know, it says it all. There's a lot of possibilities, but my concern is with this new proposed bylaw that it really seems to limit the uses. And, you know, there's places to be developed there, but just some of the things that are missing out of here, you know, like automotive parts and accessories, motor vehicle and trailers, sale of gasoline, servicing and repair of all motor vehicles. So the current, like, I'm in favor of simplifying lists or, you know, getting things narrowed down, but I love the old zoning. Cafes and restaurants have disappeared out of the M1s as well. Boat sales, rentals, plumbing, sheet metal. And the wholesale is still there, but they removed the word contractor, so. And I don't know, these are maybe semantics, but it does bring a lot of questions and concerns. And then the sweet caretaker. Now, I couldn't find in the definitions the actual meaning of the caretaker, but I would hope that still would apply to the owner as a caretaker. So, yeah, I'm I'm in favor of progression and, you know, moving forward, but I also like the wordiness of our old bylaw and would prefer to see it stay as it is. That's my humble opinion. Thank you.
Nothing online?
Good evening. My name's Craig Murray, and I live at 1978 Broton Boulevard. Just wondering why this whole business came about? And who is to benefit? And who is to benefit most from this change of bylaws? The people and the businesses who live in Port McNeil? Or is it the council? Not quite sure of that. I've heard a lot of opposition tonight to the current scheme of things and how it's going to be dealt with. And I'm not sure who makes the final decision and why it's made. Are the people that spoke here tonight and the people that have not shown up here tonight, are they going to be listened to by the mayor and council of Port McNeil? And when will we be given the opportunity to find out if this moves ahead or not? As it's been mentioned several times, the times we're in now are scary to a lot of people. There's a lot of uncertainty. And moving the goalposts and changing the game rules perhaps would add to that insecurity and that unknown. So I'd just like to mention to the council to give some thought to what they've heard here tonight. Because in my mind, there's a lot of reasonable questions as to whether this should go ahead or not. And what is the incredible urgency for this to happen? I would suggest perhaps some time be given and thought be given to how this moves forward. Because there's a lot at stake here. And a lot of the current industries that Port McNeil has enjoyed over the years are perhaps seeing somewhat of a decline. And room for new industries is definitely open and required and necessary for this community to survive. And I think that's what we're all looking at is an element of survival. So I just want everyone to take a minute to breathe and have a good, hard look at what is actually going on and why before any decisions are made. Thank you.
So though we're not getting into debate, I do procedurally, I think it's really important for the public to know that this by law is at second reading. This public hearing will help form our opinion. And we purposely held it on a separate day from a council meeting so that we would have time to ponder and consider the things that people have brought forward to us. It can stay at second reading for quite some time, and I anticipate that there'll be much debate around this council table as we move forward. All of our meetings are online, and they're recorded, and you can follow along, or we encourage you to come to our regular council meetings when you see it on the agenda, and you can hear our debate, and you can follow the process.
Can you just clarify that procedurally as well? We had to get to second reading in order to get to the public hearing?
Yes, so, yes.
We had to get to second reading in order to have?
In order to have this public meeting, yes. And, yeah, there'll be a third reading and then a fourth and final. But as I said, the second reading will remain second reading as long as we continue to have it on the table and debate it. So just wanted to let everybody know that. Thank you, Council Baron.
And just one other thing, we can make changes at second reading still.
Oh, yes, and that's why it stays at second reading because
until we're satisfied.
Until we're satisfied, yes. And if we were to decide to make changes at third reading, we rescind the third reading, and we keep debating. And I'm going to just talk to, I'm going to pass it over to our planner because there are things about fundamental changes in the process that will happen if that goes that way.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, and I wanted to reiterate, as we go through and we contemplate the comments that we received from the community, if there are significant changes made, we must come back to public hearing again prior to adoption.
Thank you very much. That was a good question, and I felt it, clarity was necessary for the public. Okay, I will ask for a third and final call for anybody making a presentation of submissions on the proposed Town of Port McNeil zoning by law. And I think what we decided to do is those who are in teams, just in case, I don't know, somebody had a hard time raising their hand or you got missed, we're going to allow the camera and allow everybody into the room to see if anyone online had anything they wanted to add but couldn't because of technical difficulties. Everybody's a presenter now? Okay. Please come to the mic. You can ask a second time. There's anybody that hasn't asked a first question, so come right ahead. That's okay.
Me again.
And you are for the people online?
Oh, for the people online, yes. Bob Coop, 2875 Woodland Drive, Port McNeil. This was just a question, going back to the, the church is allowed in all zoning? Okay, is that in our existing by law? I wasn't aware of that. I know it was R1.
I'll turn that over to Kevin.
Through the worship to Mr. Coop. No, it is not in the existing zoning. That was something through conversation with council and the community that was requested that we add to the by law. And so that is a provision of the new by law.
Oh, okay. All right, so noted, thank you.
Does anybody online like to make a comment? You're now able to unmute and put your camera on if you would like to do so. And last chance here in the audience? Okay, so seeing no further submissions, I'll now call the public meeting closed. And as was stated earlier, tomorrow, our planner, Kevin McElaney, will be coming to council and answering our questions for us. We encourage you to log in or come tomorrow night if you'd like to hear what we have to ask of him. And on that note, we'll adjourn the public meeting. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming out. Thank you to staff as well, and thank you, Kevin, for being here to answer questions for us.